Call the February 8, 2018 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Absent is Dwayne. Absent and seated for Dwayne is Ruth Ann. Absent is Eric. And absent is Kim. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. We'll start with December 14, 2017, meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to that?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the December 14, 2017 minutes.
I second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Ruth, that we approve the December 14, 2017 meeting minutes. All signify by yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Next, approval of the January 11, 2018 minutes. Any additions or corrections?
No.
No.
All right. Then do we have a motion?
I move to approve the January 11, 2018 minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that we approve the January 11, 2018 meeting minutes. All signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
Of the same.
Item number seven on our agenda is a public hearing, a resolution to adopt the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, 2018 to 2022, as part of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. So it looks like we have Jim and Mary and Dennis are going to do that?
Yes.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. As you mentioned, the item before you tonight is a review and a recommendation to town council on the most recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I believe it was two weeks ago that we sat down with all of you and our staff at a study session to kind of brief you on the plan, a little bit more detailed presentation at that point in time. And as part of our efforts, obviously, we have now completed the draft plan and we forwarded that to you. So hopefully you've had a brief opportunity, take a look at it, maybe even read it from start to finish. And as part of our presentation, we'll just hit some highlights. And then any questions or dialogue that you want to go through in regards to the plan, we have all of our staff available this evening. In addition to myself, Jim Cleveland, our Parks and Rec Director is here, also Acting Deputy Town Administrator for not too much longer.
Time will tell.
Time will tell. Mary Ludicata, representing our Planning Community Development Department. There's also Alex Eaton, who -- she's waving. She was instrumental in coordinating many of the efforts on this plan. She's in our Recreation Department. In addition to Mary, Bryce was involved in the plan, and obviously the young fellow sitting in the back of the council chamber, Mr. Fusa. Moving forward, once we go through this tonight, we have scheduled town council review and hopefully approval of the master plan for February 20. In fact, we completed that staff report today. So that's kind of the schedule. Just wanted you to be aware of that. The master plan, the purpose of the master plan, I think the best way I can describe it, and having been involved in the preparation of these plans, probably going back to the early 1980s, it's really a roadmap. It's a roadmap to, one, kind of look at where we are now, and how do we get to a point in the future, and what kind of guidance does that roadmap or does that plan provide us? And this was really our starting point for this particular document. In addition, it is really our first, believe it or not, first master plan for our parks, recreation, and open space. You probably find that hard to believe, but we had a number of, I'll say, independent documents that we've used over the years. Open Space Trails and Greenway Plan, Bike Way Plans, Facility Assessment Plans, Value Division Plans, all out there being used by us, but nothing that really pulled everything together. And so that's what this document did. And it does it in, I think, a very succinct and a very useful fashion. Takes all of those plans, takes up-to-date analysis, that was part of the seven-month process, puts it all together here, and then it has some very detailed strategic action plans, both broad and specific, that hopefully we'll have the opportunity to implement over the next five to 10 years. So that's a real important factor, this specific plan. A little bit of background, with regards to this plan, in addition to all the staff that we mentioned who was involved in this, and there was actually other departments involved that we worked with, in addition to Community Development, there were some of our engineering folks, even probably some of our communication folks. So it was really almost a town-wide effort, if you think about it from that perspective. We collaborated not only with Community Development, but the Epley Institute out of the University of Indiana. Basically, it's a nonprofit group, but it consists of both students and practitioners in the field that have experience with recreation nationwide. And even though we went through a pretty rigorous process to select Epley, I have to be honest with you, on their end, they go through a little bit of a process to select their clients. I mean, they are somewhat selective. They want to make sure who they team up with, that the plan will come to fruition, and that it's an organization that they would feel comfortable working with. So it was kind of a two-way street, if you think of it from that perspective. In addition, the plan will help us meet a process we're going through now. We call it accreditation. That's about two, two-and-a-half-year process. We are close to finishing that up in probably the next, I'm going to say, four to five months. That has been a department-wide effort. And it's really accreditation through what they call the Commission on Accreditation for Park and Rec Agencies, CAPRA, as you see up there. So this plan will meet part of that accreditation process. And that's one of the things we've been striving to do and looking forward to do, so. The master plan process, if you look at those six little rectangles up there, the process is pretty straightforward. From my experience, you don't see anything up there that is unique. It is pretty straightforward. But it's the execution and the detail and the level of detail that we have in this plan that I think makes it really, really different than a lot of other plans. Going into and initiating the project, the master plan, I think one of the things from a staff level we were concerned about, and this is unfortunately true of a lot of these kinds of documents, you prepare them, they're great documents, they go on the shelf, they don't get used a lot. That was not what we wanted to. And so if you look at kind of the granular level of detail, especially in the strategic action plans, which we'll talk a little bit about, and maybe you've had a chance to read and look at those, those are very, very detailed. And that was part of our initial scope, and talking about what we wanted, kind of that project initiation with the Epley Group. Then the next component is research and analysis. We worked very hard to take a look historically of where we've been, the various documents that we have internally that would be useful for this effort. And we really also worked with our Community Development Department and other departments if there were documents that Epley needed to have to make kind of a full range of analysis. And then community engagement. And the one thing I want you to look at up there as far as community engagement, if you look at all of those different steps, they're basically a month, a month-and-a-half process. Community engagement on this particular project was, I'm going to say, two-and-a-half, three-month process. And we felt it was probably the most important part of the whole process. We looked at different methods as far as community engagement with regards to trying to make the process open, fair, collaborative, making sure that anybody that was providing us information, providing us comments, providing us input, was comfortable doing that. Needs and analysis, that is also critical because that's where we started to develop and take a look at, what are the things that we need moving forward in the next five-to-10-year timeframe? And the strategic action plan, and the various things that are included in that, are wide-ranging, to say the least. And they can be down to a specific park, or a specific trailhead, or a specific program that we do at the rec center, very detailed to very broad actions. We've already, quite honestly, have started to talk about a number of those action plans and what we can do to implement those. We recognize that some of them are, I'll say, low-hanging fruit, that we can start to act upon pretty quickly. Other ones may take several years. There may be some cost involved in implementing some of those, but that's part of the plan, and that's part of our goal and our effort moving forward. Then finally, drafting the plan, and obviously that's what you've seen over the last month, or at least at your study session, is a draft of the plan. And then finally, adoption. And as I mentioned here, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have the plan hopefully before our town council for adoption. I talked about community engagement and why that is a really important process for us. We worked with Epley and tried to determine a number of platforms to elicit public comment, town website, mailers, open houses, surveys, all sorts of different methods to elicit as much input as we could on this project. And that's why I said it was probably about a two, two-and-a-half-month process. We ended up getting probably close to, if not over, 1,000 different responses on our community engagement process. And based upon that, there were a couple of, I'll call them themes, if you will, or at least some thoughts that came through pretty strongly from residents. And those are listed up there. One, it's kind of the second bullet point, the need for aquatic and recreation facilities, specifically in the kind of the southern portion of the town. And we've recognized that for years, that we are looking at over the next five to 10 years, maybe sooner, a second rec center somewhere in Parker. Having it on the south side of town, geographically, from the standpoint of where our population is growing, that seems to make some sense. Potentially an aquatic facility as part of that, that may require a partnership or some sort of sponsorship because those things are always expensive to construct, and to maintain, and to operate. With regards to partnerships, our residents felt that the town should continue to look for partnerships, to leverage our opportunities, leverage our resources as best we could. And we have, over the years, and when I say over the years, probably the last 20 years, had dozens of different partnerships come to our department. Some have not worked out, other ones maybe wasn't the right fit for Parker. And these ranged all the way down from the Cronky Sports Group to small individuals wanting to partner with us on whether it's programming or some other things. So we look at that strategically, quite honestly. We do, and I mentioned at the study session, have a partnership that I think is going to get off the ground here soon, literally breaking ground and starting construction, and that is the tennis facility next to the Parker Field House. And we spent a good two, two-and-a-half years with that partnership. So that's one of the things that the plan has pointed out, to try to do more of those. Continue planning neighborhoods with open space requirements. Open space is near and dear to a lot of residents in Parker, and we understand that. Through our development code, we require a minimum of 20% open space dedication when we go through and look at residential developments that come through. And I do have to make sure that you understand that that 20% is a minimum. We can ask for more, and quite often we do. And then those end up quite often being a dedication by the developer to the town. In addition, from an open space perspective, we will go out actively and look for areas that we can purchase. There's been one in particular, when I say purchase, acquire, the Harvey Open Space is a good example recently, 72 acres on the east side of town, just across from the Canterbury Main Street intersection. And we're moving ahead with that, literally, as we speak. In fact, the conceptual plan was approved by town council this prior Monday night. Also, there's kind of a need to balance new facilities while maintaining existing facilities. One of the things I think Jim and I noticed over the years when we started here is the town was growing extremely fast. We had to react and build things, when I say things, parks, playgrounds, trails, very quickly to keep up. And I think what we're finding now, even though the town is still growing and we still need to do those things, we need to also kind of take a look back at some of the things we've done. Are they reaching their useful life? Do they need to be renovated? Do they need to be expanded? Do they need to be upgraded? And that was some of the feedback we actually got from residents, talking about playgrounds specifically. They looked at a lot of our playgrounds as needing to be updated. And that's a result of us trying to do things really fast 15 years ago, 12 years ago, and just taking a playground design off the shelf. Well, I think moving forward, we want to look at maybe more creative ways to do some of these things from the standpoint of what our citizens are looking for, and quite honestly, what they're demanding. Facilities and amenities that residents indicated they would like to see. And those four up there, there probably couldn't be a wider range of things, from drinking fountains in parks to future recreation centers, water-based recreation, and restrooms. And I talked a little bit earlier about kind of that low-hanging fruit. We're already looking at the restroom and drinking fountain components up there and seeing what we can do at our existing parks and our new parks. Water-based recreation and recreation centers, that's a little more problematic, only in the sense of finding the right place and having the money to be able to build those kinds of facilities. So we will continue to kind of keep our eye on the prize, if you will, as we move forward with those different kinds of amenities.
Okay. It's such an exhaustive plan that there's going to be two of us presenting tonight. I'll present to you the second half, and as we had discussed back at the study session, benchmarking was a big part of why we wanted to make sure the analysis included some of the top agencies in the country and how we compare to them. We felt like with national recognition in the past, it's important that we stay on that leading edge. So we asked the consultant to not only compare Parker to similar-sized communities, but specifically those that have achieved national recognition, whether it be from gold medals or similar accreditation. And because there aren't a lot of communities that have either or both of those, it made it a little more difficult. But we did find, through the help of the Epley Institute, seven agencies around the country that we were able to benchmark against. And that provided us a tremendous amount of insight because we do want to keep Parker on that leading edge, and it's important that we compare ourselves to the best. Some of the information that came back from that was the need for more special-use parks, specifically those are parks that have dedicated uses that are more regional in nature. A good example would be the plans for Salisbury Park North. That 90-acre park, when built, will have a number of ball fields, sports fields, an amphitheater, area outdoors. It's really intended to provide regional facilities for a large group of people, far beyond what maybe a neighborhood park would provide for the community. Our playgrounds need to be updated, as Dennis mentioned. That's something that we've been looking at for a while, and this study reinforced the need to do that. We talk about the end of useful life. I think Dennis and I forget how long we've been here because these parks, a lot of them seem new to us because we built them at what seems like just a few years ago. And it turns out, I'm starting my 25th year, so I guess it probably was a little longer than that that we built some of these parks. So we do have to make sure that we are staying on the leading edge with our existing facilities and make sure that we're updating amenities as the industry dictates and as the need dictates. Our multi-use trail system, you're probably familiar with that. We've got a very comprehensive and aggressive system, and it was confirmed to us through the study that what we have in Parker, it far exceeds national averages. It's good to hear that, but by no means will that allow us to take our foot off the pedal. I think we know that trails rate near the top, if not at the top, of every citizen survey we do. They also rated very high with the information we got back on the master plan. So we will continue to make sure Parker leads the way when it comes to trails throughout the community. The partnership we have with HOAs provides a really nice, comprehensive selection of parks throughout the community, and as that map to the right shows, where it shows Parker's parks or trails within a 10-minute walk, that is really the new standard that many national agencies, like the Urban Land Institute, are using to assure that communities have enough park or trail coverage. And if you look at the map, you'll see that within a 10-minute proximity of our park and trail system, we cover the vast majority of the Parker community. There's a few small areas not covered. One is up in Crown Point, where it's more commercial, hotels, and then the other is in the southwest quadrant, which we will soon have parks and trails as that area develops. So I feel like we've done a good job, this is somewhat validation, that we're headed the right direction. But I do compliment our colleagues in Community Development because we work together with them to make sure that between town-owned parks and HOA parks, we have and continue to have great coverage throughout the community. And then finally, we have a pretty robust recreation division. Between the facilities they offer and the number of programs, which amount to over 3,000 annually, they bring in a lot of money, and they provide a lot of services to the community. And our consultants were very impressed with our recovery rates for those programs, and the revenues generated are far above national averages. So what that helps us do is to sustain those programs and also put the money that we receive back into the Parks and Recreation Fund so that we can build more parks, or that we can add new playgrounds or update facilities. Some of the highlights of those that needs assessment, as we mentioned, an additional recreation center should be developed in the next five to 10 years. That one bullet represents a lot of money, so we don't take some of these recommendations lightly. We know that there's a lot of work and a lot of funding that's going to be required for that. As Dennis mentioned, too, there was a lot of support for aquatic additional, additional aquatic space, both leisure and competitive uses. As you may know, our local high schools depend on the recreation center for a lot of their competitive swim teams, and while that has worked somewhat, it's probably not a great long-term solution. We also need to enhance and add wayfinding signage at several of our parks and trailheads. That's something Dennis and I have talked about, actually, for quite a while as well. It's just a matter of prioritizing. We also just discussed the balance of HOA and town-owned parks and the effectiveness that has. And then, of course, updating the land development ordinance to assure that not only are we set now, but well into the future, and that we can meet the needs of the growing community with our aggressive parks, trails, and open space system. So from the study that the Epley Institute did, all the feedback they received and their analysis, they came up with five themes that they then broke down into several action items. These five themes included managing and protecting assets, enhancing inclusive programming, connecting people and places, enhancing organizational capacity, and programming for the community. And from these themes, then, they developed over 80 action items that will probably keep our department busy for the next several years. So some of the strategic action items that were identified, just as an example of some of the things that you could see, and I think Dennis mentioned, they went from very granular to some that were very, very big. But just to give you an idea of what some of those might include, theme one, redesigning and upgrading the parking area at Bar CCC Park, which is actually on our agenda here very soon. Theme two, addressing ADA priorities that are included within their ADA site visit report. The Epley Institute did a separate study while they were out here, looking at compliance with ADA, and while we're in good shape, we don't really want to just set the bar at compliance. We would like to be well beyond that. So we are striving to not only meet, but exceed where we can accessibility. Theme three, adopt a policy on best practices for the design of high-use multimodal trails, including signage with the needs of access. Connectivity is a big part of what we look at when we're designing the trail system, and we want to make sure that we keep that momentum going and continue that access. Theme four is develop a five-to-10-year asset management plan. That's one of those less sexy things, but certainly one of the things that needs to be done to assure that we do keep our facilities and assets up where they need to be. The community expects a lot, and we want to continue delivering. And then finally, theme five, investigate the community's desire for specialized outdoor programming. A good example of that would be Ruder House, where we do plan to introduce a pretty robust outdoor recreation program. All we need is the amenities and facilities to get in there, and our master plan for that project is also well on its way. So we hope to be able to accomplish a lot of the goals with theme five out at Ruder So with that, we will conclude our presentation and ask for any questions you might have. We appreciate the time tonight. We also appreciated your time earlier with the study session, so please let us know if you have any questions.
Jim, I have two quick questions. Crown Point and the trails, and I understand there's a lot of commercial hotels, et cetera, but with all the apartment development, are we going to bring some trails out of those apartments to be connective in Cottonwood?
Absolutely, yeah. We're continuing to look at the underserved areas where we can. Dennis is kind of working very closely with Bryce on a lot of our trail master plans and long-term trail strategies. I think they are exploring several different connections, also gaps where we might have those. It seems like while we feel very good about where we're at, there's always suggestions from residents, HOAs, businesses, homeowners, even apartment dwellers for more connectivity. So we do have a fairly generous amount in each annual budget to just address those additional connections.
And with regards to the apartments and kind of the businesses up in that area in Crown Point, one of the, I'll say, regionally significant trail that's going to eventually go just north of that area is the E470 Regional Trail. And we are working on that diligently at this point. That connection, which will basically head due west from the existing E470 tollway, it will cross just north of that area, and eventually it will cross, be a great separated overcrossing over Parker Road. And there may even be some opportunities to do some connections from that trail down to Cottonwood Drive. So it's a little further out timeframe, a couple of years, but we're working with Douglas County, Arapahoe County, and Aurora on ourselves to make that happen.
Okay. My other question is on Hess. Are we going to have any type of partners helping us to develop that rec area? I mean, Parker Water, Cabela's, anybody like that interested in helping out?
We have placed some initial feelers out there to see if the private sector may have some interest, and we have received some modest interest at this point. Nothing contractually, but we are ramping up our aggressive search. We will, at some point, do an RFP so we can formalize proposals and attempt to try to find some partners that we can get more robust with the programming. We really need more infrastructure, but it's never too early to start planning for those partnerships now. First question?
I have a question. Is the goal with the second rec to duplicate what we currently have, make it bigger, more Has that been defined as of yet?
Hasn't been defined yet. We would probably seek a lot of public input to assure that we were headed the right direction. We have some areas that we experience chronic overcrowding, so we would probably duplicate those. But we would also explore opportunities to introduce new amenities that might not be currently available at either the rec center or Field House. So we really want to stay on that leading edge, so I think it would be a combination of some we have now, but also some that the community doesn't have.
So meeting the unmet need, somewhat closing a gap?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, thank you. By the way, this is very good. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Other questions?
Nope.
No.
All right, as this is
As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Do we need any further information from staff?
No.
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 Okay. Then we will close the public hearing at 7:30. Planning Commission discussion.
As Eliana said, I think this is a fabulous presentation, shows really strong planning and helping us to look forward for many years. I appreciate the efforts of staff.
Yeah, and I think our study session that we had a few weeks ago was really in-depth and much more than tonight, and really brought forth what you guys have done with this plan in the next few years.
And after the study session, which was very well done, by the way, I did a little bit of a deeper dive into Epley, and I don't know if you're aware, that they actually reject more than they accept.
We were aware of that, so we were thrilled when they expressed interest.
And I kind of went, I said, made a comment to a friend who lives in California. I said, "We're working with Epley." She goes, "We tried." I said, "I know." So, it's commendable.
They picked us almost as much as we picked them, so.
I reviewed all of your strategic actions, the pages and pages of your specific to-do list. It's very impressive, and you can tell what the priorities are, have been set, by what dates you've given things. You can see that some things you recognize are going to be, you know, after this plan actually expires, will be in the new plan. And I just, I'm very impressed. It's very good.
I concur with my fellow commissioners, and being an accountant, I always look for numbers. And with cost recovery rate of 87%, which is above national average, is, you know, is a great number. I really like it. Way to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I'll repeat what I did at the study session, that having been around parks and recreation all my life, you know, this is a very thorough, very complete, a really living, working document, and kudos to all of your efforts on making this happen. So, do we have a motion?
I move that Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Parker Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan 2018 to 2022 as part of the Parker 2035 Master Plan.
Chris second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Eliana, that we, Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Parker Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan 2018 to 2022 as part of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any further items, Bryce?
There are no staff items tonight, sir.
All right. Then we will adjourn at 7:33.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the February 22nd Planning Commission meeting
is canceled.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then we will adjourn at 7:33.